Okay, I will call this meeting to order. Welcome all. We will begin with opening by Keisha, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will all rise please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening just thanking you for another day. Lord, we ask that you bless each and every community member in Talbot County, God, as well as those that are present here this evening. Lord, bless our law enforcement and those that protect and serve us in our community. Lord, we ask for a special blessing over this council. Continue to lead, guide, and direct us. Give us your wisdom, knowledge, and understanding as we make decisions for the best of this county. And Lord, we thank you and bless you. In your precious Son's name, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Council has an agenda before it. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Mr. Vice President, if I may, I'd like to make one minor modification to the agenda today. So we have currently scheduled as item number six for council recognition of Cadet Philip Horner of the Eastern Composite Squadron. We'd like to remove that from today's agenda and move that towards a future agenda if we could.
We have a motion to remove item six?
Second.
And a second with the modified agenda. Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is approved as modified. Council has disbursements from February 20th and February 27th. Are there any additions or are there any questions on the disbursements?
No questions.
If not, the chair moves that the disbursements be approved by unanimous consent. And we move on to a proclamation for Endometriosis Awareness Month. We have a guest here, and could we read that proclamation into the record, please?
Proclamation, Endometriosis Awareness Month, March 2024. Whereas endometriosis is a disease affecting at least one in 10 women of reproductive age, whereby the endometrium, a type of tissue that normally grows in the uterus, also grows outside the uterus. And whereas many of the estimated 200 million women worldwide who have endometriosis live with debilitating chronic pain and fatigue, and on average experiencing a delay of up to 10 years between the first symptom and diagnosis, with between 30 to 50% experiencing infertility. And whereas, although endometriosis can affect every organ of the body, even the eyes and brain, at the present time, the disease can only be definitively diagnosed via a laparoscopic surgical procedure, and healthcare providers must focus on managing the symptoms of the disease with various treatments. And whereas, the first worldwide endometriosis march took place in 2014, with events held in more than 40 countries. And by 2018, 63 countries around the world were participating in the annual event, which has been sponsored by the American Medical Association, the American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists, the American Society for Reproductive Medicine, the Society of Laproendoscopic Surgeons, the International Federation of Gynecology and Obstetrics, and the European Society of Human Reproduction and Embryology. And whereas, there is a need for further research and increased funding for research of endometriosis, which would hopefully lead to earlier detection, the discovery of the cause of the disease, a reliable, less invasive, and less costly way to diagnose the disease, more effective ways to manage symptoms, and a cure. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Endometriosis Awareness Month in Talbot County, and urge all citizens to help increase awareness of endometriosis and the importance of diagnosing this disease, which to date has no known cure. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 27th day of February in the year of our Lord 2024.
And we have as a guest this evening to receive this Shannon Hanawald. Would you like to come forward?
How are you?
Welcome, welcome back, I should say.
Yes, thank you for having me. Yeah. Just for anybody that doesn't know who I am, my name's Shannon Hanawald. I am the founder of Endo Warriors of the Eastern Shore and an ambassador for the Endometriosis Association. I want to first say thank you for supporting this proclamation again. This is the fourth year I've done it and the fourth year that you guys have stood the hand me and the community and supported us, and I greatly appreciate that. The first year, I kind of explained what endometriosis was, the symptoms, the signs, the treatments. The second year, I kind of told more about my story, how it had taken five years for the doctors to tell my parents that I was lying, that I had tried to commit suicide because no one would listen to me. I had lost a baby due to infertility treatments. Last year was kind of like all of that together because it's a whole body disease. It's not just a reproductive disease. This year, I kind of wanted to add into that while endometriosis isn't listed yet as an autoimmune disease, it does have many autoimmune disorders that are associated with it, such as lupus, Addison's disease, thyroid disorder, Crohn's, which I unfortunately was diagnosed with this past year. I have spent three to four days in the hospital each month since June while they have been trying to figure it out. My main goal this year is I want everyone to make sure that they advocate for themselves. I was in the emergency room and I had a doctor come in to me and he didn't say anything. He came and sat down in the chair and looked at me and said, "Endometriosis is not that painful and is not an emergency condition." And after I sat there for a minute and got my thoughts together before I said something that I would have regretted, I looked at him and I said, "Actually, it is extremely painful and it is an emergency situation, but that isn't even why I'm here." So instead of taking the time to ask questions and find out what was going on with me, he just jumped to conclusions when he obviously was not educated on endometriosis at all. So after I got myself together because I was very upset, it took me back to when I was 16 years old and the doctors wouldn't listen to me, and it took me back to a place that I did not want to be in again. It kind of relit the fire of why I do this and why it's so important. All I could think about was my nieces or some other younger generation laying in that bed and being spoken to that way and not knowing to advocate for themselves, and that made me really angry. So it is kind of my theme this year is just please advocate for yourself, even though you can't see it on the outside. And to most of you that don't know me, I would probably look like I was fine if you walked past me on the street. You never really know what somebody is going through, so please don't make assumptions when you don't know anything about it. If someone says they have something wrong with them, ask questions. If they don't want to talk about it, then research it. Anything is better than the way that that doctor made me feel that day a couple months ago, and I just refuse to let that happen. And it just reminded me why I do all of this. My last thing, well, one of my last things is, I always like to use the quote, "God grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, the courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference." One of my nieces brought this quote to my attention, and I feel it explains it perfectly. Endo warriors unfortunately cannot control being given endometriosis, but we can have the courage to change the course of the disease and how it affects us and others in the future. My last thing is, I am having my third annual Go Yellow for Endo Day on March 15th, and I would be more than grateful if you guys would participate in that. I've given each a ribbon. You don't have to wear the ribbon. You can wear a yellow shirt or a yellow tie or anything yellow that you want. You can email them to me. You can post them on my Facebook page, which is Endo Warriors of the Eastern Shore. And again, I just want to say thank you because I can say thank you a million times, but the community always reaches out and says how grateful they are because it's like they're finally being heard. And instead of sitting in silence, they don't feel alone anymore. So it is truly humbling to have you guys stand behind all of us and the people that love and support us when we are going through these hard times. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hanawald. You are indeed a powerful advocate, and thank you for all you're doing. Are there any questions for Ms. Hanawald?
No questions, but if I can comment? So Shannon, I just wanted to thank you for coming out again and again sharing your story. I'm sure it's not easy, but it takes a lot of courage to do so. I thank you for that. I love this year's theme too, just advocate for yourself. I mean, whether it's endometriosis or whether it's anything going on in your health or your family's health, it's very important. We've experienced that in our family where, you know, have to advocate for yourself. And if you can't advocate for yourself, advocate for someone else if they don't know. So I love the theme this year. Thank you for giving us a recap of everything of all years past and keep up the great work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just wanted to thank you for sharing your experience, strength, and hope with the public on the issue.
Thank you.
Again, I echo what my colleagues have said, but thank you for, you know, advocating for others and for yourself. But just like Dave said, you know, been in a position where I had to advocate for healthcare, you know, for my spouse, and that is so important. We do have to advocate for ourselves a lot of times to get to the bottom of the true root and cause of some of the things that we are dealing with. So thank you so much for coming in again.
Thank you.
Well, counsel, we have a proclamation before us. I need a motion for its adoption.
So moved.
Second.
If the clerk will call the roll, please.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
And that passes. If you would like to come forward for a picture, Ms. Hayth will present that.
Very nice. Thank you so much.
Shannon, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on our agenda is an introduction of our community liaison with our Congressman Andy Harris. Mike Detmer, welcome. Come on forward. Thank you for coming in, and you'd like an opportunity to introduce yourself to the council?
Thank you. Counsel, thank you so much for having me. I'm here tonight in my capacity as community liaison for Congressman Andy Harris. And I bring greetings and salutations from the Congressman to you. You'll have no easier time convincing me through this work and some other things I'm involved in, the importance of the work that goes on at the county level. The business that's done in here deeply, deeply affects the citizens, and I understand that well, and the Congressman understands that well. With that recognition of the importance of the work that the County Council and the county staff have to do, we look forward to working with you in whatever capacity we can on any kind of federal issue to better the situation of the people here and to help you in any way that we're able. I'm the liaison not just to the council and the staff or municipalities, but also to individuals. I'm looking forward to, in the very near future, attending an Eagle Scout ceremony right here in the town of Easton. And that's just one example. I personally, on the staff, help handle VA concerns, which is a Marine Combat Veteran. That's something that's very near and dear to me. So our staff has a lot of different capabilities and an awful lot of concern. We've all been charged with doing great customer service for our constituents. With that, I would like to invite you to be very, have a low threshold to contact us. We really do look forward to working with you to do the business of the people of this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you so much and look forward to working with you. You're already a presence in the community, and now we will see even more of you in this new role. So looking very forward to that, and thank you for taking on this new role.
I'm looking forward to it as well. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, Mike. Thank you.
Next, we have an update from our Board of Health. Dr. Maguire.
Good evening, everyone.
Well, welcome, and the floor is yours.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. So again, it's Dr. Maria Maguire, Health Officer for Talbot County, here to give the Board of Health an update about the goings on related to the health status of the county as well as activities of the Health Department. And so it's an honor to be here again and to update everyone. So I wanted to start off by introducing a special member of our team. So we have a new Director of Environmental Health at the Health Department. This is Brennan Green, Licensed Environmental Health Specialist. He started with us as Director of our Environmental Health Program last Wednesday, so he just finished his fifth day. So we're very excited to have him join us. And he succeeds Anne Morse, who was with us for 43 years. So we are greatly indebted to her service to the county and the Health Department. And so she retired in December, and we are really lucky to have Brennan join us. He comes to us from the Maryland Department of Environment. He served as the Regional Consultant for On-Site Systems, which is related to well and septic work. And so he comes with a wealth of knowledge and expertise, and we're just extremely excited to have him join the team. And this is a very busy team. I put up some statistics about the accomplishments that that team had in the past calendar year in 2023. So when you think of public health, a lot of people forget that environmental health is part of what we do, but it's really important to keep our, you know, to prevent the spread of illness and disease. And so we have a very active food service. This Talbot County is a tourism destination, so we have a lot of restaurants and catering facilities. We have about 300 businesses with food service licenses, and they all need to be inspected and licensed. And so last year, we performed inspections of those, and we also approved about 158 well construction permits, 103 septic system permits, 138 soil and site evaluations, and 615 building permit applications. So that's a very busy schedule for, I think you have like eight and a half FTEs on your team. So we're really excited for Brennan to lead that team. So thanks for coming.
I'm really excited to be here, really excited to meet everyone, and understanding that I have pretty big shoes to fill with Ms. Morse's 42 years in the Health Department. But I'm looking forward to it, looking forward to working with everyone and trying to protect the health and safety of the citizens of Talbot County.
Well, welcome, welcome. Talbot County is, I think, takes pride in the strides that it's made with clean water initiatives, and you are a cornerstone to that effort. So look forward to working with you and thank you for stepping up to it.
Absolutely. Looking forward to it.
Welcome back.
Thank you so much, Brennan. And I'm going to move on to talk about some other public health issues. We just heard about Endometriosis Awareness Month. It also happens to be Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month, and that's, I wanted to highlight some cancer issues in the county. And so just to remind everyone that colorectal cancer is one of the cancers that is preventable, treatable, and beatable. And so just an overview of, over on the left, I show a graph of cancer death rates over the past about 10 years, where the death rates are actually declining a bit. I think that's primarily due to decreases in smoking, to be honest. But cancer is the second leading cause of death in the US and the state and the county. But as I said, the rates are slowly declining, and so I always like to mention that the single most important thing anyone can do to improve their health is to quit smoking, and that will have an effect on your risk of cancer as well as several other diseases. So I wanted to highlight a few types of cancers that are relevant to public health. And I show on the right the rates of diagnosis of new cancer and the mortality rates of prostate, melanoma, breast, and colorectal cancer. And for most of these cancer rates, the Talbot rate is about equal to the rate we see in Maryland, but it is significantly higher for melanoma. And it's interesting because Talbot is the county that's the fourth highest in terms of melanoma diagnoses. And I believe the highest is actually in Calvert County. And so that's, there's several reasons why that might be the case. We spend a lot of time outdoors in the summer. We take advantage of our water sports. There's a lot of people who work outside, such as in agriculture, the watermen. And this is a cancer that the rates are much higher in men. And so there's a lot of opportunity to, you know, educate about the ability to prevent melanoma in men. So that's one thing to just highlight as something where we're a bit, we have a bit of work to do. And in terms of mortality rates, our death rates for breast and colorectal are significantly lower than the rest of Maryland. So that's good news, but of course, we always want them to be as low as possible. So moving on about colon cancer, and I just repeat the rates of, there's about, the rate of new diagnosis of colon cancer in Talbot County is about 34 per 100,000. Our population in Talbot County is 38,000 about. So that translates to about 13 people with a new diagnosis every year. And of those, there's about three deaths that occur from colon cancer every year in our population, and that translates to a rate of about 7.5 per 100,000 residents. So what can we do to help prevent colon cancer? Well, an important element is screening, and that's, there's tests and also colonoscopies are an important element in screening. And so up until 2021, the recommendation for colon cancer screening was to obtain a colonoscopy if you were between the ages of 50 and 75. And Talbot County had a pretty decent rate of colonoscopy screening at 79%. That was until 2020, which is the year with the most recent data. That was a tiny bit higher than Maryland's rate of screening, which is 76.6%. And I should mention that in 2021, the recommendations did change by the US Preventive Services Task Force, because they now recommend that colon cancer screening start at age 45. So that's 45 to 75 should be the ages during which you obtain colon cancer screening. And so if your first colonoscopy is negative, then you can, then you don't need another one for 10 years. And the reason for that decrease in the age of, you know, first colonoscopy was because they were finding that between the years 2000 and 2010, the incidence or the diagnosis rate of colon cancer in 40-year-olds increased by 15%. So we were seeing colon cancer in a younger age. Why is that? So one of the key ways to prevent colon cancer is by having a high-fiber diet. And so it's thought that with the recent decades where maybe the nutrition has not been as optimal in terms of, you know, intake of fresh fruit and vegetable and high-fiber foods, that that may have contributed to the increase in colon cancer in the younger population. And so up on the right, I list some symptoms that might be a sign of colon cancer, such as, you know, change in stool habits, blood, blood loss, abdominal pain, unintentional weight loss. And so again, echoing that theme of advocate for yourself, if you see any of these symptoms, you know, seek evaluation. And the prevention, again, has to do with healthy diet, again, stop smoking, and also decreasing red meat consumption can help, and then get adequate screening. And so in public health, there is a program called the Cancer Prevention Education Screening and Treatment Program. And so Talbot Health Department is one of the recipients of this grant-funded program. And it is funded by the Cigarette Restitution Fund, which if you remember from the 90s, the big tobacco settlements, that's what funds the cigarette restitution fund. And again, that funding source kind of highlights the link between tobacco and cancer. And so the goal of this program is to reduce cancer incidence and mortality throughout Maryland and to reduce disparities in cancer outcomes. One thing I didn't have specific rates for, but we're starting to see increasing rates of colon cancer in especially younger black men. And so that's one of the disparities we're trying to target. There are seven cancers that this program tries to target, including lung, colorectal, breast, cervical, prostate, including lung, colorectal, breast, cervical, prostate, melanoma, and oral cancers. And this program provides outreach, education on cancer, links individuals to screening and treatment, and actually provides coverage of screening for uninsured individuals. And so through this program, we have a target of covering the cost of colonoscopies for twenty individuals. And I should mention that with colonoscopies and cancer screenings, under the Affordable Care Act, it was required that any cancer screenings and preventive care are fully covered with no out-of-pocket costs. So things like mammograms, colonoscopies, under law, insurance cannot charge the individual an out-of-pocket cost, so that's all covered. Same thing with things like vaccinations. Now, if there's a finding on the thing, they can change the code they use. But so, for, so really, it's for people who are uninsured, who cannot access the cancer screenings. So our program is partnering with the University of Maryland Medical System and the Digestive Health Center here to have a colorectal fair in March. The date of it, I actually give a little bit later, is March tenth. And so that's one of the events where we try to provide education and spread the word about colon cancer prevention and screening. And in addition to that C-Pest program, one of the things that our Health Department's been trying to do over the past couple of years is to, you know, try to find additional funding sources to support our endeavors. And we were one of twenty-three organizations in the country to be awarded a seventy-five thousand dollar competitive grant by a company called Exact Sciences. They are the manufacturers of Coligard in-home screening tests. And so this grant is allowing us to support testing a hundred people in the county for, for colon cancer with those screening tests. And so we're, we're really lucky and honored to have been awarded that grant and to help our efforts in, in providing better access to colon cancer screening. So I wanted to move along and highlight some of our programs that we've been involved in the past few months that have really been marking some very important partnerships we've been engaging with. So for instance, Mobile Integrated Health. Some of you have maybe heard about this program. It's a really exciting program that we partner with Talbot County Emergency Services in providing in-home integrative health evaluation for high utilizers of nine-one-one calls and high utilizers of emergency rooms. And so this was a program that, because both Emergency Services and Health Department were, let's say, preoccupied during the height of the pandemic with some other things, kind of fell by the wayside the past couple of years. So we've been really trying to restart it back up. And so in January, we were able to start going into people's homes again, some of these individuals who are high utilizers, most of whom are in our senior population. And so really, the goal is to lower healthcare costs and prevent these non-emergent nine-one-one calls and ER visits by linking people more directly to their primary and preventive healthcare resources, as well as some other resources. Sometimes we identify, you know, that someone needs a ramp or some, you know, there's, there's certain very easy solutions sometimes that we can link someone to. And it's really important that this team, which partners basically a paramedic and one of our nursing staff, and we also link in a pharmacist with Shore Health. We review, you know, the, the prescriptions, try to match that with, you know, what the person's supposed to be taking. And, and so it's really trying to get the person really back on track so we can have them avoid needing to use the ER. And so currently, we're able to provide these in-home visits once a week. And so we're hoping that this program can really grow and expand because it's, it's really a benefit to the, to the recipients. And, and we have a really wonderful working relationship with Emergency Services. So we're really excited about this program. Another program I wanted to highlight is one called the Children and Youth with Special Healthcare Needs. So this is a program that we were running really strongly, and because of some retirements, kind of got disrupted. And so as of November, we have restarted this program. We are one of four health departments in the state to be awarded this grant. It's a competitive grant, so we're really proud of it. And it's one of several of our maternal-child health programs, which work together to serve children and youth. And this serves children aged, birthed aged twenty-one with significant disability and chronic illnesses. And so anyone who has a child with these significant healthcare needs due to our location and, you know, our rural location and just all of the normal burdens that parents find, sometimes you need a little help getting exactly what you need, especially with wraparound care. And so with this program, we have a nurse and a peer who provide in-person assessments and home consultations. We link the parents and the child to available resources that address medical, social, financial, educational, developmental, and behavioral needs. And so I just wanted to highlight, to make it a bit more real, some of the success stories we've had with this program so far. So we had one case where a child had cancer, and he needed a walker that sort of attached to his hip so that he could become more ambulatory. So we were able to get him that. One child had a rare genetic disease, and there was really a transportation issue getting him to all his various specialties. And keep in mind, there are really hardly any pediatric specialists on the eastern shore. So transportation needs is really high in this, in this, with these families. And so we helped coordinate care to ensure he was able to go to his appointments. And we had another child whom we linked to services that just weren't covered by his insurance because insurance often imposes like a maximum that they allow. And so, so those are some of the success stories for children that we're able to help with this program. And we're really excited to restart it and that we've been awarded it because it is, it is one that only very few health departments are able to receive. And then another exciting program that we're starting, I'm calling it the Clinical Services Expansion. So this is basically expanding the number of clinical healthcare services that we offer in the Health Department. And so this has been an important initiative of mine because we find that our residents, often there's, it's hard to get an appointment somewhere or it's hard to, you know, there's a waitlist to get in for certain primary care doctors. And so we just want to address some of the gaps that we're able to do. And so for instance, this spring, we are starting up a family planning clinic to offer comprehensive contraceptive services and pregnancy testing. That is due to really start March twenty-sixth. And so we'll be offering two half-days a week for that clinic to serve both people who are uninsured and individuals with health insurance. And in May, we anticipate expanding that clinic to offer comprehensive testing and treatment for sexually transmitted infections. And then in the summer, we're gonna start offering more broad general health screenings. We already offer things like HIV testing and hepatitis C testing and smoking cessation, but we want to do more comprehensive health evaluations and, and enable better linking to especially primary care medical homes. And so we're really excited about that. We'll be bringing on a nurse practitioner and some more medical staff to help support that. And like I list below, we'll be able to offer services for both insured and uninsured. And we plan to, we're now enrolling in various insurances, including Medicare, all the Medicaid plans that operate in the county, and certain commercial plans, as well as the Tricare Military Health Plan. So we just want to be open for really any resident in Talbot County who, who really needs services. And we anticipate being, you know, able to, you know, be more available helpfully with a no-waiting list for the services we're able to offer. So we're very excited about this. And I wanted to also highlight something that's occurring right now in the state, which is called the Commission on Public Health. And so this is, you know, there's several commissions that are established at the state level. One of, and one of these is on looking at public health in the state and taking a very comprehensive view as to, you know, what is the mission? What is the scope? Is it adequate? How can we improve it? And this was really inspired by what happened in the state of Indiana, where a few years ago, they enacted a similar commission and looked at, well, why are certain health outcomes worse in, in this state versus others? And what can we do to, to improve those? And so we think about, in Maryland, we may have better outcomes in certain areas, but we have worse outcomes in areas such as maternal morbidity and mortality. We have worse outcomes in things like ER wait times and placement into behavioral healthcare. And so what can we do as a system to improve those outcomes? And so this was a commission that was formed in June of last year by the Maryland General Assembly. It came out of House Bill two hundred fourteen. And like I said, it's to conduct an assessment of what we call the foundational public health capabilities. And so the foundational public health capabilities, it's a little hard to see, but these are the areas that the Accreditation Board for Public Health identifies as areas that any, any institution in public health should be, should be actively engaging in. And they include things like community, sorry, communicable disease, surveillance and, and management, chronic disease prevention, environmental health, maternal-child health, and, and services for, for the aged. And so those are the foundational areas when you think of, you know, core public health. And so there's broad engagement with various stakeholders on this committee, on this commission. And it has five work groups that are specifically looking at the areas of funding, governance, workforce, data, and communication and public engagement. And there are three regional meetings that are occurring this spring. And Talbot County was asked to be one of those, the host of one of those regional meetings to represent the eastern shore. So we're really excited to have been asked to host that meeting, which will bring in stakeholders from around the state. And we really hope that it will coincide with the opening of our new building, so we can show that off. And we anticipate recommendations from this commission to be provided to the state legislature by June twenty twenty-five. And the potential, this could result in more funding from the state. This could result in more standards that we're being held accountable to, such as national accreditation. And so it will be very interesting to see the outcome of this and to ensure that Maryland has the optimal and best public health system in the country. Moving on, I wanted to highlight some of the partnerships and events that we've had over the past several years. We can't do our work without our important community partners. And so again, I mentioned the, the Mobile Integrated Health Partnership we have with Emergency Services. A couple others just to highlight. So currently, we are partnering with Chop Tank Community Health in an initiative for our schoolchildren. So Chop Tank is the federally qualified health center that serves Talbot County as well as the neighboring counties. And it provides our school-based health centers. Okay, so that's like having a mini doctor's office in the schools that allows children to get health services without having to leave school, without having to force parents to pick them up and take them somewhere. And so it's a really important program. We're very lucky to have it in Talbot County. And so one of the, one of the, the things that Talbot County Health Department does is ensure that all the, all the students in the school system are compliant with the immunization standards for attendance. And so we have created a process that allows those children who need vaccination to enroll to get navigated to Chop Tank as a medical home and not just provide the vaccines, but to really do a full and comprehensive medical evaluation and have, and establish a medical home. So we're really excited to, you know, really continue to bolster our relationship with, with Chop Tank because they're a really great partner. And then we've had, over the past two years, a new project called the Tobacco and Diabetes Disparities Project, looking at why certain populations have higher rates of diabetes and tobacco use. And we've been partnering with a lot of community organizations such as BAM, Delmarva Pride Center, the Watermen's Association, and For All Seasons to, that are really helping us get the message about better education on, on prevention of those, on disease, diseases like diabetes and tobacco use. And so it's, so we're really grateful to be able to engage with these partners in the community and help magnify our work. I just wanted to share a few photos of some of the results of these partnerships. So for instance, in December, we worked with Home Instead to basically provide a lot of equipment and gifts to seniors in our senior care program. It was called Be a Santa to a Senior. We helped support a family who lost their home to a house fire. So we, we were able to provide that family with some needed, some needed basic resources and link them to resources in the community. We've been working with Gray Street, which is a pretty new recovery community organization in, in Easton that helps support individuals in recovery from substance abuse. And one of the events we hosted was a CPR and AED training for staff at the Health Department. And we've increased the number of our CPR and AED trainings, including for, for all the school system employees, as well as we're gonna start offering them for other members of the community. And we have been a presence at a lot of community events. So these pictures show some of the places where our outreach team has attended, including, you know, Christmas parades, the Waterfall Festival. We've been doing a lot of interviews with media outlets. We had our first annual Waterman's Health Fair a few weeks ago, trying to get, you know, link especially that population in Tillman to health services. And we provided blood pressure screenings and testings and provided counseling on certain health issues. And so that was a really wonderful program that we hope to continue in the future. And, and we were present at the Suicide Prevention Walk. And we had a trunk-or-treat, which was a really fun thing, where we invited families to come and, and for Halloween and, you know, receive a little education of health on the side. I'd like to recognize some of our staff. So this past year, three of our staff have been recognized by the Secretary of Health for their work. We have Farley on the left, received an Outstanding Customer Service Award. And on the right, one of our nurses, Rachel Crawford, and our office manager, Tina Johnson, each received a Secretary Spotlight as well. So we're really, you know, it's always so wonderful to, to, to recognize the hard work of our staff. And I often say that often, I just need to get out of the way and have the staff come up with the innovative ideas to, to highlight why, why we're doing such a great job. And so I wanted to also end with a couple of important event information. So like I mentioned before, we're partnering with some organizations for this colorectal fair on March tenth. We are also having a literacy open house with our Early Head Start Program in March, and we're partnering with the library for that. We are having our second annual Talbot County Community Baby Shower in May, as well as a Senior Resource Fair in May. Our Commission on Public Health Regional Meeting, I think, will be in July. And then we're planning a back-to-school fair for students in August. So we're always trying to, you know, interact more with the community and host more events. And, you know, that's a way to really help our, our residents on a more individual level and get as much health education out there as possible. And the very last thing I wanted to touch on, which is very exciting, is our new building. This has been a work in progress for several years. And we're really excited because we're at the home stretch of this. And it really should be completed, I believe, in perhaps June. And so I wanted to show, the picture in the middle is of the team. And included in that team are some county staff that we're really grateful for, especially Brian Moore, who's the Director of Facilities, because he's been really shepherding this whole process. And it's really amazing that it's come to. And it's really amazing that it's come to fruition and it's become real. So we're really excited to be able to show that off and hope that soon we can invite all of you to see it when it's, when it's ready. So we've had a lot going on, and we're excited for everything we have planned for this spring. So I thank you again for allowing me to come and give you an update.
Dr. McGuire, thank you very much for highlighting all the accomplishments of your team here. Are there comments or questions for Dr. McGuire?
Appreciate the update, thank you.
Just, just two items for me. One is that several of us on the council had an opportunity to tour the schools recently, and so I had the opportunity to see the partnership with CHOP-TANK Community Health, particularly with the mental health counselor at one of the elementary schools. And good to see that the investment in the health centers is, is not just the traditional school health center, but is embracing mental health as well.
Right.
And a quick question on the Mobile Integrated Health Program. Is that sort of implied in there? Is this is largely targeted to uninsured residents?
Oh, no.
No?
No. It's often residents who do have insurance but simply don't have the resources. So sometimes someone who's, you know, they may be on both Medicare and Medicaid, but they have high health needs and they're still high utilizers of 911 calls or ER. So no, it's not limited to, and often it actually is people who do have, I think almost all of the participants have had health insurance maybe not quite adequate for their needs, and they are somewhat plugged in, but the access isn't there, because just because you have insurance may not mean that you have easy access to the health services you need.
Well, we know how costly it is to use emergency services for chronic medical conditions and care, and grateful that the department is addressing that in this way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the introduction of a numbered resolution. Ms. Moran, would you read the title into the record, please?
A Resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to clarify, one, to clarify and confirm the water and sewer classifications of certain parcels incorrectly shown in Exhibits A and B to Resolution Number 281 as amended; two, to reclassify and remap the water and sewer classifications of Tax Map 55, Parcel 83, Lot 1; Tax Map 59, Parcel 4; and portions of Tax Map 55, Parcel 17 and 65 as W3 and S3; three, to provide the equivalent dwelling units for all phases of the lakeside development; four, for consistency with Maryland Department of the Environment Discharge Permit Number 19DP3460; and five, to require that any future expansion of the lakeside wastewater treatment plant shall require an amendment to the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas, would you like to provide an overview?
Yes, thank you. So briefly, what this resolution does is it combines Resolutions 338, 347, and 348 into a single resolution and adds the, adds with the addition that the existing W2, S2 portions of lakeside would be reclassified as W3, S3.
Questions or remarks from council at this juncture? This is just for introduction at this stage? So I directed, I directed council to draft this in response to feedback from the Public Works Advisory Board for perceived flaws in Resolutions 347 and 348, from both their meeting and from the joint workshop with the, between the Public Works Advisory Board and the Planning Commission. Anything further? If not, we will look for introduction by show of hands, those introducing. So introduced by Milkie and Lesher.
This will be known as Resolution Number 353, and the public hearing will be on Tuesday, April 9th at 6:30 p.m.
Thank you very much. That will allow it to go to the Planning Commission before it comes back for our public hearing.
Correct.
Terrific. All right. Next on our agenda is the County Manager's Report. Mr. Stamp?
Thank you, council. I have several pieces of business for you this evening. First, under Board and Committee Appointments, we have two. Under the Police Accountability Board, the Administrative Charging Committee, we're requesting council's consideration for the reappointment of Jennifer Williams, who's been serving on that board or committee.
I need a motion to do so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Jennifer Williams.
We have a motion and second. If, Ms. Moran, if you'd call the roll.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
And the second is involving the Local Drug and Alcohol Abuse Council, known as LDAC. We're requesting the appointment of Tanisha DeShields, the Case Manager for Talbot, for Talbot and Caroline Counties, from the Maryland Department of Juvenile Services.
I need a motion to do so.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and second. If the clerk would call the roll.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
And the next item we have, council, we've received a request from Critchlow Atkins Children's Centers for a letter of support for their effort to secure a state bond initiative in the amount of $500,000 for an expansion of their space and in conjunction with the planned expansion of Chapel School. There are no county funds being requested.
So moved.
Second.
And Mr. Stamp, this is because while we, while we and the state pay for the expansion of the Chapel District School, and the school partners with Critchlow Atkins for before-and-after care, we, the state and we do not actually pay for that capital cost, Critchlow Atkins is responsible for raising those capital costs, this will help them to do so.
That is correct, sir.
Thank you. We have a motion and second. If the clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
And finally, under announcements, council, just want to highlight an initiative brought forward by Councilmember Step. On April 25th, we will be celebrating Talbot Day. Certainly want to turn it over to Councilmember Step to say a few words, but I'd also like to recognize our staff who is moving swiftly forward to try to garner support in our community for this event. And Sarah is here to be able to talk to that, if you don't mind. So we'll hand it off to Councilmember Step first, and then Sarah Kilman, our Communications Director, will come up and add some particulars.
No, thank you, Mr. Stamp. Yeah, April 25th, Talbot Day. You'll see it hanging up out in the hallway, out, just outside our back doors here. A wonderful, a wonderful proclamation that we did last year, which again, goes back to the 1983 recognition of April 25th is Talbot County's birthday. So we are just following through from what was started back in 1983 to actually celebrate all things Talbot, right? So there's some wonderful events planned. Sarah, team, I have to tell everyone, thank you for all the work you've done to date to make this what it is. And as we go from, you know, 2024 into 2025 and beyond, we just hope it gets bigger, better, and becomes a larger celebration. So appreciate that. Sarah, over to you.
Yeah, of course. Well, thank you so much for bringing this forward this year. I think it's really exciting. So my name is Sarah Kilman. I'm the Public Communications Officer for the county. I also do all the communications, so the social media, the press releases, all that good stuff. So Talbot Day is the official birthday, and so we're going to have a celebration on April 25th. Our goal is to have the celebration out on the courthouse lawn, weather depending. We're excited to have the towns and the schools joining us in that celebration. We're putting the pieces together to make a really nice ceremony. But on that day, we're also going to be celebrating the winner and, the winners and nominees for the Talbot County Poster Contest. The Talbot County Poster Contest is a new initiative this year, a new program, where we're asking different age groups, students as well as adults, to participate and answer the question, what Talbot County means to me, in the form of a poster. So you can use any art medium you choose, and then you can find all the details on our website for that. The other thing that we're going to be celebrating on that 25th is the Talbot Citizen and Service Awards. This was recently previously known as Maryland, You Are Beautiful. We've decided to reinvigorate that program and keep it local here in Talbot County, where nominees will be accepted, and then we will celebrate the Citizen of the Year, which will be voted on by council for that April 25th date. So if anyone would like more information, the easiest place to go is talbotcountymd.gov/talbotday, and that will give you information on the poster contests, the Citizen and Service Awards, as well as the details for Talbot Day once they're live. I would also like to say that I have been reaching out to a lot of different organizations to see how we can get them involved, that some have already reached out. The library will be doing, putting together some historical book guides, and as well as working on some speaker events and some children's programming. So they're very excited to get involved. We have the Historical Society is also, has already planned their, they have an exhibit right now that's Talbot County themed, that will be up until April, so they're encouraging people to join in on that. All this stuff is coming together, and we're really excited to start to share all that as it comes out, so.
Love it.
Any questions for Ms. Kilman? I just want to thank you for rolling the, what you're now calling the Citizen Service Awards into this event. I think that that was a brilliant move and great to see that that kind of recognition for our community volunteers will be carried forward.
Absolutely.
I often do want to commend both David and Sarah for coming forward with this idea and then all the work you've done to bring it to fruition. Maybe next year have a Talbot County Anthem Contest.
Yeah, I was thinking about that. I was like, do we have Talbot County poems, a song? I'm like, I don't know if this exists, so maybe next year.
Sarah, that's awesome, hearing about the, about the library and, you know, just the Historical Society, and like I said, I mean, this is just for all things Talbot, right? So, you know, our religious community, our arts community, I mean, everyone that's out there, let's, our business community, however you want to celebrate it, you know, again, let's, let's bring it all, again, just a big, huge celebration for all things Talbot. So just job well done, council. Thank you all for, you know, signing off on that and kicking this off here, and Sarah, thanks again for running with it.
Yep.
Great things all around.
It's going to be good, I would say.
So Sarah, thank you. Just to close that out, I just want to recognize Sarah and her energy. One of the, we do a lot of things, work hard for our community, but what we can do better is tell the story of the things that are being done, and Sarah has just taken the ball and run with it. This is an example, but, you know, we have a lot of dedicated county employees out there every day, and there's a story to be told, and she's telling that story. So we want to thank her, and we're excited about this. So thanks for bringing that forward. And, Mr. Council President, or Acting President, Vice President, council, that concludes your County Manager Report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stamp. We move on to public comments. Do we have anybody signed up in advance?
Not tonight.
Is there anybody here who wishes to bring anything to council's attention? If not, we will move on to council comments. Ms. Hayes?
No comments tonight.
Ms. Milkie?
No comment tonight.
Mr. Step?
I'll stick with the theme, no comment.
I'll offer one, which is that I think this news broke in Maryland Matters, it's now spread to other media outlets, but the State Department of Assessments and Taxation is delayed in reassessing. Every year, they reassess one-third of the properties in Talbot and every other county. That delay in reassessments has implications for our calculation of our tax rates and for every other county in the state. It appears that the state legislature is rapidly working on a fix for this, and we look forward to being able to do that. So for those of you who are anxiously looking forward to your, the reassessment of your property, if you hadn't already heard, that is delayed. Mr. Stamp, did you have something to add?
May I add one more announcement?
Yes.
There's nothing more important than saving lives. I think we all would agree. Tomorrow morning, 9:00 a.m., starts an entire day of free CPR training at the community center. And so we want to get that message out. If you have a, if you have a little time, stop out to the community center. Our paramedics and EMTs are out there, and they'll be training CPR all day long. So I just wanted to get that message out. And I think you can get more detailed information by going to our county website.
Thank you, Mr. Stamp. That's really important. Talbot County, we certainly have seen lives saved in this community because we have so many people in this community trained. This is, this is really important. I had the occasion to get retrained in CPR last spring by our own emergency services personnel. They're wonderful to work with, and for anybody who hasn't renewed, thank you. Talbot County Council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 12th, 2024. The council will convene at 2:00 p.m. here in the Bradley Meeting Room for the fiscal year '25 budget presentations from various county departments and agencies. At approximately 4:30, the council will hold closed session, followed by the legislative meeting beginning at 6:00 p.m. On Thursday, March 7th, the County Council will convene at 2:30 p.m. in the Bradley Meeting Room for fiscal year '25 budget presentations from various county departments and agencies. The meeting is open to the public. And with that, if there's no further business to come before the council, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
If the clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
We are adjourned.